Good, we're right on time, five o'clock, we should start. Welcome everyone to the January 2023 Local Planning Committee meeting. We're thrilled to have guests from the Commission and our new planner. We're so thrilled you're all here, hello.
It's a big day.
Introduce ourselves, it is a big day, it's very exciting. Just, it looks like Brian has made the go to meeting work remotely, that's awesome. We're also expecting Jim and Pete hopefully as well. I think our first order of business is to approve the minutes from last time, but just to make sure, crowdsource this a little bit, we have an appropriate form?
Yes, we do.
I believe we do.
I think so.
Group consensus, okay. So everyone got the minutes by email?
Yes.
Thank you Barbara. Appreciate it. Any questions, comments, revisions?
They look good to me.
Look good to me.
A motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there any vote to approve the minutes? All in favor? Anybody opposed? Okay, agenda one, item number one of the agendas, done, excellent. And welcome Chloe Schaefer, and I'm sorry, I forgot.
Martha.
We're so glad you're here often, we're thrilled to hear from the Cape Cod Commission. Please, yes, you can, we think we can dual task this here on the laptop, we've been told that Chloe has a presentation.
Cool.
Yeah, so as per the agenda, we're thrilled that you came from the Commission because we are really excited about ultimately our ultimate product being certified by the Commission, so thank you for coming and talking to us about this.
Brian, can you see that?
Yes, I can.
Amazing.
You already killed it Chloe, good job.
It works, it works nice.
Are you seeing the whole?
I think he's seeing the present.
I see, I see the deck on the left, now I see the full screen.
Okay, great.
Thank you. So you're gonna give us a presentation, we have time for questions, this is gonna be, this is a very collaborative collegial committee, so welcome.
Great, is it okay?
Whatever, whatever, whatever makes you happy.
You can dump him off the stage, we don't need to see him.
Just while I'm doing this.
Whatever makes you happy, and please make yourself comfortable if you wanna pull a seat up or however, thank you, but we're not, we're in the small room because the Board of Selectment is meeting at the same time.
No problem, okay, great. Yep, so my name's Chloe Schaefer, I'm here with my colleague Martha Hubener from the Cape Cod Commission. Just have a brief presentation going over what's required in terms of Cape Cod Commission certification for a local comprehensive plan, then we will open it up for discussion. So first of all, of course, why do an LCP? So an LCP really helps to articulate a shared vision for the community, defining kind of how you wanna change, how you wanna evolve into the future, and really plan for that evolution. It also serves as a great resource for decision making among boards, elected officials, town staff, and residents. And so in terms of commission certification, there are six kind of key elements that are required, vision statement, and existing conditions, overview, goals, a capital facilities plan, a housing plan, and a targeted action plan. First of all, a vision statement, of course, articulates the vision for the community, where, again, kind of where you wanna grow and develop, how you wanna evolve, kind of what those shared values among the community really are. And one example of this comes from our regional policy plan, this is the growth policy contained within that for Monmouth County, identifying where growth should be focused, resources to be protected, and kind of how to develop here in terms of really being responsive to the context. The community's LCP vision statement should also be consistent with this one, so something to keep in mind. Next, our existing conditions. This should really describe the community as it is now, both in terms of opportunities as well as challenges. This is an example from the regional policy plan of just some kind of basic demographic, economic, and other data points you might consider, but certainly should be expanding upon those, but some of the basic ones like population, number of housing units, median household income, top employment sectors, those types of things. And the data and the existing conditions portion should really be used to help guide your discussions in terms of how you're thinking about the future of the town in developing the plan. Next, our goals, so the LCP should have land use and planning goals that reflect the priorities of the community. These are the 15 issue areas of the regional policy plan, they're categorized in three different kind of systems, the natural built-in community that we use to describe the region. There are 15 total issue areas, and each of those issue areas in the regional policy plan has a goal as well as supporting objectives. Communities should develop the goals that are important to them and reflect the community, they may use the RPP goals as they are, they might tailor them, they might have different ones, but the key thing here is that the community's LCP goals are not inconsistent with the regional policy plan goals. There are also, some of these issue areas may be more important to a community than others, there might be issue areas that aren't contained in here that you feel are important to have in your LCP, certainly we've seen that with several, two or three communities recently, and that's great, that makes perfect sense, again, just making sure those aren't inconsistent with these goals.
Were those developed by the Commission or?
Yes. Next is a capital facilities plan, so really should have something in there that describes existing conditions, challenges of infrastructure and capital facilities, what projects are needed based on that assessment, potential funding sources and strategies for funding them, as well as describing how those projects are important to support the vision of the LCP. In terms of a housing plan, there are two ways to satisfy this requirement, the first is having an approved DHCP housing production plan, if the community doesn't have that, then something else that describes the demand in the community, what some of the challenges or limitations are, and then what specific housing goals there are in actions to support those goals. And then finally is this targeted action plan, this should include specific bylaw amendments that are proposed to help fulfill the vision of the LCP, capital projects, again, kind of pulling from that capital facilities plan, those that are necessary. Specific housing actions, we recognize a housing plan might have dozens of actions, but kind of honing in more so on those really specific ones for fulfilling the LCP vision, and any kind of other issue area action items. And for these ones, really looking more kind of in the near term, what the town would be looking to do in terms of a rough implementation schedule for these actions. We also look for an anticipated meeting schedule with commission staff, this is really just an opportunity for us to check in with you all, see how things are going, if there are areas that we can provide assistance with, wanna know that, so that is something we look for there, and then some performance measures just to help identify whether these actions are moving forward or not. One thing I wanna mention is this concept of place types, this is something new with our current regional policy plan, and it's really kind of a framework for identifying those areas throughout the region that have similar built-in physical characteristics, characteristics. The regional policy plan has eight, they range from natural areas which are the least developed and most sensitive, to more densely developed places like community activity centers, industrial activity centers. The kind of envisioning for the LCP, the place types concept is something that should be given some consideration, we recognize not all of these may resonate with your community, but some of them likely do, and they might be a good tool in terms of thinking about those areas and strategies for them. The regional policy plan also has strategies and specific visions for all of these eight And then finally, our regulations were updated in 2019, and it includes a more streamlined process for certification, so first, of course, you engage the public, have your process in developing a local comprehensive plan along the way, we're here for any feedback and assistance, there's an option for meeting with the committee on planning and regulation, and then once you complete your LCP, you file a hearing on it, take it to your town meeting, and then it's only after that it's adopted that it actually gets submitted to us for our review and certification process. So because of that, we do wanna make sure what's going to the town meeting is something that would satisfy our requirements if you're seeking our certification, so that's just why, it's good to keep buzzing a little along the way. And then, just finally, we're here for general feedback, but a few things we have assisted towns with recently, is existing conditions data, we did develop an online data viewer for the town of Barnstable for existing conditions data, of course, it also involves some mapping and helping communities in kind of putting together their targeted action plan. So that's all I have, now I'll see if I can get this back up.
Thanks Chloe.
Oh, thank you so much, it's excellent, it's really a great continuation from, we had kind of dug into a lot of material that was available online last meeting, so that is great to make those kind of things come alive, I just wanna check that what else is trying to jam with basically. Questions, I think we're open to discussion, questions?
As far as kinda, I think you talked about, after the growth policy and the vision, you talked about like, I think there were six areas, or three subset areas, and then in those were different areas. Do you ever see, and how do you manage conflicting interests, like capital projects versus per town, right, like, cause every town is a little bit different based on the geography and everything else, like, how does that get managed, and how does that play a role into working with you guys to figure that out?
Good question, I mean, I think generally the goals themselves shouldn't be in conflict with each other, I suppose certain projects when it comes to that, there might be, might be a balancing act in determining that, I don't know where Chloe has thought on that.
Well, I would think that, I mean, the local folks figured that part out, and I'm thinking, for example, in, it might have been in Borne or Brewster, when the draft plan got shopped around by the committee, town staff actually weighed in and said, well actually, you know, that's not feasible for us to do all these projects at this time, you know, we need to prioritize these a little bit differently, the funds aren't there, or priorities are different, so I think that in addition to, to the committee and your outreach work coming up with goals and a strategy, it's really great to get input from town staff.
Okay, in terms of like weighting, right, like, let's, let me give an example, like, we have a housing crisis, we've all talked about it, right, but then we also have to balance that with our wastewater plan and our treatment of open space, so how do you guys, is there like some sort of overarching community or county metric or point system around evaluating that stuff to say, this is more important for not just the community, but, you know, the county as a whole, and if there's like a conflict, like, hey, we got all this open space over here, but guess what, we have to knock down a crap ton of trees and everything else that will put us at ecological risk and put strain on our water supply, right, how do you guys balance that and manage that going from town to town? I don't know if that's ever come up.
Well, one thing, just to take a step back for a moment, I did wanna add on to Chloe's presentation, is that in part of the streamlining of the new regulations that the Commission put out, and looking at David and Margo, because you probably remember, back in your days, the binders, we get these huge LCPs with a lot of plans and duplication of plans in the LCP, so what's really important, your LCP is your umbrella, your umbrella strategy, your umbrella goals for everything that the community does in terms of land use and planning, and you've got a whole bunch of other plans already completed, you know, your hazard mitigation plan, your open space recreation plan, your wastewater planning, so I see the LCP, well first, you would incorporate those plans by reference, you don't need to, you know, enclose your whole open space plan back in the LCP, and the LCP is the place where you, you would incorporate the goals and some of the priorities from those other plans, whether it's your housing production plan, your open space plan, and so, to some extent, you know, it's up to the community to figure out what the priorities are, but you would also be referencing other plans that also have goals and actions in them.
Cool.
And I'll just add, I think, you know, this is a process by which the community gets to identify not only what those priorities are, but like where those priorities might be in terms of your land use planning, so again, identifying those areas that the community wants to grow or develop, redevelop, if it isn't growth per se, and those areas that are important for resource protection.
Thank you.
Chloe, one of the concerns I had when we met a month ago was that even though each town is developing its own plan, we still, even though we're 15 towns, we're really, 15 towns, but we're one region, and we really can't have Eastham doing something different from Dennis, which is doing something different from Brewster, because A, we're all, no, the same water, wastewater issues, and we have, no, we have the whole septic issue coming down the pipe and everything like that, and what, is there anything within your guidelines that can help guide us where we're not in disagreement with our neighbors or other towns on the Cape, so that, we really need to have a united voice here, I mean, little specifics for each town, but this really needs to be a unified approach and plan for the whole Cape, Capewide.
So that's, for my part, second, that's our regional policy plan, that's the wide plan that addresses the whole county, and then making sure that your local comprehensive plan is consistent with the regional policy plan is what the certification process is about, and thus making sure that it's not conflicting with another community's local comprehensive plan vice versa.
But some of the towns don't always get your certification, is that correct? Or?
To dovetail with that, to help us learn and sort of expand our horizons, you mentioned that there are some issue areas that were not included in the regional plan that towns have identified, could you tell us a little bit about those, cause it might get our wheels turning as well?
Definitely, so Borne, they included education, I believe was an issue area, for example, Brewster, I believe had a governance, sorry.
Well, Prowster also had governance, it was important to them to have that.
I feel like there's only two in one of those plans that I'm trying to think of, but those are a couple of, couple of examples.
All the cows might have come up, I think in one of them.
I noticed in the Yarmouth plan that they had a whole section on libraries, which normally would not be in a local comprehensive plan, but, yeah.
Knowing their libraries, it would be a good.
You know, very, yeah, no.
They have more than one branch of their municipal library, I believe, whereas, what is it for us, so I, it's still kind of surprising, even as a trusty with libraries to be, but that may be why it's, it's got more libraries, more branches to do.
Something, so, and so if something comes up in our, say, visioning process, okay, you answered the question, that can be included, right?
Yep, I think, yeah, I feel like maybe community services is something that we've seen as well for the local.
Sure.
Zoe, sorry, Chloe, I have a Zoe in my life.
I'm used to that, don't worry.
Sounds like it.
Close, but not right. The mapping that the Commission has done of the different place types, seems like it would be a starting place for us to think about, you know, land use types within Harwich and how they, and how they butt up against our neighboring towns, so it seems like using that as a starting point. When we first talked about the place types at our last meeting, there was some concern around the table of like, well, what does that really mean, and do we have a place like that? For example, we don't have a military base to worry about, but, but even some of the, you know, the, the other gradations of development density, if you will, trying to figure out where do we fit in that spectrum, so getting some help from, some technical help from you guys with the maps, I think would be a big help.
So we've mapped, we've only mapped three of the place types, the industrial activity centers, community activity centers, and natural areas, we can certainly, you know, get those.
That's on mine.
Yep, get those.
Yes.
But I think one thing to consider, for example, the community activity centers that we've identified are really looking more at the regional scale, so Harwich might have, I know we have identified one in Harwich, and then one that's more like right on the border of Dennis as well, but you might have smaller ones that weren't identified kind of at that regional scale that might make sense here, just, just for example, what I wanted to say.
There is some existing mapping that would address that to a certain degree, perhaps best in the wastewater plan, but those could be, you know, with staff on board, those could be checked pretty easily.
And the, to the, you know, the regional, all the discussion, the regional matters, like today you're referencing West Harwich, Dennis, or that makes sense in continuity, right, so it doesn't have to be just isolated, it'd be interesting in your maps in general.
Yeah, we can definitely.
Other questions?
One last one, can you tell me a little, how your regional policy and how you are treating historic resources, because I didn't see that called up specifically, so where are you putting it in, do you have some guidance on how other places are using it?
That is included in our cultural heritage issue area, so it does have, I think I have a goal here, so maybe, so certainly that comes into play in many aspects, but yeah, our cultural heritage goal is to protect and preserve the significant cultural, historic, and archaeological values and resources of Cape Cod, so that's one area that deals with it, it also comes up though in our kind of broader community design issue area, of course, making sure that development is in context with our existing patterns and historic resources, but that is something that we look for, and if you have, say, a specific historic resources section instead, that's great, but it is something definitely that we look for in the plans as well.
Well, I think one of the, one of the questions I've got is the fact that some towns are, you know, supported wholeheartedly, say Chatham, some, not so much kind of like competition in a lot of respects, it's like, you know, hey, it's old, let's go ahead and tear it down, put another McMansion in, this, one of the things we're seeing continuously here, you know, Brewster's pretty historically minded, and as is Yarmouth, so I guess that's one of the biggest things I see as far as across the Cape is the treatment of historic resources, it seems to be run the whole gamut, I don't know, from the whole context there, it's like, thoughts are?
I think there's probably opportunities for actions in your local comprehensive plan, things to pursue there, we could certainly have our historic preservation specialist come and chat with you if you're about more of those, what those things might be, but I know also you just had your, not just time flies, but the DCPC in West Harwich, I know was geared towards historic preservation, so that's certainly a plus in that regard, but I don't know if you have thoughts to add.
Well, I was just thinking, just to add on to that, if you find out through your public outreach that that is a priority around preservation of historic resources, this would be the place to develop some actions around it, it might be developing some zoning changes to protect historic resources, I don't know, improving your inventory of historic resources, I mean, the LCP would be the place to lay out those, not only the goal, but also the actions that would follow, and also even mapping where they are.
Yeah, the point that she made about, probably made about the DCPC in West Harwich, which is, provides some pretty substantial planning protections of historic elements there, also Harwood Center, Historic District, and it has, the Historic District Commission has fairly substantial controls over what can and can't be developed, and what can and can't be done. There has been efforts in town, especially in the Campgrounds area, that establishes historic district there, but has not been well supported by majorities of the Board of Selectment, just to remember, frustration, you know, and then when the Community Preservation Act first came into effect in town, there were some efforts to put some of that money into doing a better job cataloging the historic catalog of town, buildings around town, and it, you know, it's a whole process of recruiting, procuring somebody to do it, and that was never really well supported by the town administration in seeing that that process was, could be done well, and we could get somebody competent on board to actually do the work, and it sort of fizzled out when we got returned to the preservation program, so.
If I could, excuse me, if I could just add in, so your LCP would also be a resource here, because you suggested that there was some interest in pursuing a historic district, for example, well, you know, the actions in the LCP don't need to be all huge steps like making a zoning change, they can be simple, like explore the feasibility, or if there's interest in having a historic district in X area, but, you know, putting all that in the LCP helps capture that, and gives you some guidance about whether to pursue those things.
To follow up on that, you look at these all the time, and you're, and you're looking at, you know, regionally as well, to educate us as we start in this process, or as we continue on this process, some of, to point question, some of the most effective things that you've seen in a, in a LCP, and I would even ask even maybe some of the most aggressive or provocative, or, again, this is a safe space, you know, we're interested in ideas.
Well, I mean, ultimately, of course, getting community buy-in, that might be the most shocking thing, but that's really.
We've talked, yeah, we've talked about how we're trying, yeah.
Probably the biggest piece, and making sure that, you know, you hear from, as inclusive a process as possible.
Martha, one of the examples I would point to that you guys were heavily involved in was the Chatham, the south, West Chatham, South Chatham, whatever, along Route 28, the area where the two roundabouts have gone in, there was a huge amount of public disagreement as to what to do, and there was a lot, you guys did a lot of plans, I don't know exactly how the public participation process worked.
Well, there was, gosh, it's probably over 10 years ago, the Commission was involved in the West Chatham visioning, sort of land use visioning process, and actually, it wasn't West Chatham, just West Chatham, it was Route 28 vision process that covered, you know, all of Chatham along Route 28, and through that process, the town ultimately went ahead and pursued some village type zoning in South Chatham, and now in West Chatham, just to clarify, the issues around the roundabouts, that really came from SDOT, it wasn't the Commission, but there was a lot of community input around that, anytime you wanna put up a roundabout, you'll get community input. Or why do you run?
What, two, you know, I, you know, the Commission comes at your work, and I respect it deeply, you know, with a bias in the best sense, in a, with a, you know, charged by the state to protect what is irreplaceable, both ecologic, you know, ecologic and human the state to protect what is an irreplaceable both ecologic, you know, ecologic and human resource, right? That was the whole point. And I deeply respect the work, so I guess that's why I want to follow up on that, like, what has, what is kind of the most intriguing to you, or the most provocative or aggressive or, not that we necessarily want to do it, I just want to know what's what's going on out there, you know?
Like any skyscrapers?
I know, or, or, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll tip my hand a little bit, in terms of, in terms of my bias, right?
Next to the Chatham Airport.
And these are issues that we are all going to have to face in the committee, and I'm not telling anybody news, but like, it's possible in Harwich right now to clear cut an acre lot within a quarter mile of a watershed, cut every tree down on it, put a second home, get a pool permit, and really affect, you know, the pool on there, and really affect the lens, the water runoff, all of it's like perfectly legal, and I get it, and property rights and stuff like that, but it's also, we're all kind of thinking not sustainable. And so this is why we are all here on this committee, trying to like do the best sort of thinking around that, and I'm curious like what tools are out there.
Well, I think I would just start by saying by reminding everyone that the LCP, local comprehensive plan, is a plan, right? So it's not itself the regulatory document that's going to protect those communities.
Right, no, we, yeah, we understand, yeah.
But if that is something that's that's going on in the community, and through your outreach, you learn that people, people want to change zoning to protect them, they want to change some regulations, the LCP would be the place then to start incorporate, to start to incorporate, you have your goal, and then you'd have some targeted actions to address the issues. So, I know, I mean, I just, I'm sort of chuckling a little bit when you, when you talk about, you know, it's something that's really outrageous or something in the LCP or exciting, I laugh, because it's just, it's a plan. I don't think I've seen anything that's been really, you know, outrageous.
No skyscrapers.
Provocative, no, I mean, you know, like, I, you know, two, if we, if we said, I mean, you can be as provocative, because this is a, as you say, it's a plan, but we could be very provocative with our conditions, doesn't mean anyone would agree or the town would adopt the, you know, the recommendations.
Clothing optional.
I'm not, I'm being, you know, this is an intellectual issue, but we could recommend, like, there should be no new building permits issued in Harwich. I'm not, I'm not saying that, but that, that, you know, that is, where there's a range of, or we could say we need skyscrapers, right? So like, there's...
Those are two inside thoughts.
Yes, you know, right, no, 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 we're not, but, you know, I'm using it as an intellectual sort of example of the potential scope of this work. That's not a way to get community buy-in and practical, and no one's saying that, but are, at a really critical time on the Cape, have you seen towns sort of, or is everyone staying kind of?
Well, first, we haven't had a lot of recently adopted plan, LCPs, so that that's part of it. I mean, I guess, to me, the biggest changes that we're seeing in the LCP is just thinking about the Provincetown draft are really the focuses, the focusing on climate resiliency and housing. Those two, they really come right up to the top, and they all interact and intertwine with all the issue areas and all the land use planning, so that may come, that may help for you as well.
I'm going to be, I'm going to be all over the place a little bit here, because in Barnstable, in the industrial park, down toward Mary Dunn Road, on the left is that humongous housing complex. Was that something the LCP in Hyannis, was that part of the LCP's plan in Hyannis to create a housing project of that size? Or was that a private, that was a private that had to go through the Cape Cod Commission?
I think that was a 40B.
That was, oh, that was a 40B?
I'm not sure.
Okay. It's a senior living area.
Again, we're, this is a safe space, it's all...
Sure, sure, sure.
It's great, no, it's great to discuss.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just wondering if like, if if that is something that I can look at and say, Hyannis's local comprehensive plan had that scheduled or in the plan, and then it actually came to fruition and now here it is. So that would be just a, my first question.
Well, where it might have been, and I don't know, but just like, say hypothetically, it might have been in the housing production plan that said, explore, you know, areas of town-owned land for senior housing or for multifamily housing.
Could have not been too. So, and then I would imagine, as we've mentioned, public input will certainly help guide the actions of this, of this committee here, and I think that will lead to a tremendous amount of buy-in. I also feel that the existing conditions that our town presents this committee with is a pretty big scope, right? I would think that, do you have a blueprint for us to understand the breadth of that existing conditions, like how much do we really need to gather? And then my last point would be, I think clearly we'll be inheriting some projects that are a quarter of the way down, halfway done, and three-quarters of the way down. So I would consider some of those like low-hanging fruit for our committee to maybe finish off some of these projects that have been hanging in the, in the, in the, in the balance for years. So anything that you can share with all of my, my stream of consciousness there?
I definitely think there are kind of a core set of things people look at for existing conditions, and I think we could, just looking at other plans, you probably come to notice them pretty quickly, or as you looked into the different issue areas that are important for your town, you'll, the question will either naturally arise, like, how many of X do we have, or something like that? I think it's going to be partly driven by what's important near your community. I mean, I think we could probably point to some of the the basic ones that are generally included, but I don't know if you have that, Martha.
Well, I'm just struck, you know, when you, when you mentioned, you know, that the LCP would sort of be pushing forward projects that are midway done or partially done, it just struck me that the LCP, so those projects, in theory, would also be addressed in other plans. There might be a hazard mitigation plan that says, look at elevating, you know, Main Street, or there could be a housing plan that has a housing project on it. So to me, the LCP wouldn't necessarily be creating new projects, but your capital facilities plan, your housing production plan, your open space plan, it may be incorporating some projects from those plans and 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 putting them all together in one place in the LCP.
Perfect.
And sort of the beauty, although it's, it can be a challenge too, the beauty of that capital facilities plan is that, that's kind of your ticket for how you're going to, that really explains how you're going to fund things.
Sure.
You know, I'd say, you know, I think Margot and David, I'm sorry to keep picking on you guys, but planners who remember these old LCPs, a lot of the old LCPs had a ton of actions and really good actions and great ideas, but often they really weren't connected to a funding source or sort of to that, to that strategy ultimately of how, how that project is going to be implemented. And so creating that capital facilities plan, if there isn't already one, I think is a really useful process for prioritizing projects and figuring out how they're going to get done.
Great, thank you.
And, well, I would just add to that, I think, going back to your question about existing conditions, you want to make sure you have enough to know fully what's happening, but we don't need to see hundreds and hundreds of pages of existing conditions, it's more about the actions.
Sure. Thank you, and thank you for coming.
Well, Jeff, you know, in town, there is a capital outlay committee that that is responsible every year for keeping that plan out, is it five or seven years? I forget, they screwed around with it last year at town meeting. But anyway, and that sort of has laid out sort of capital goals for a town meeting for that, and I'm assuming, you know, we'd look at that as part of our process and determine whether we think it makes sense, given sort of the other issues that we're looking at now. And either it does, and we take actions in the plan to help support that, and, you know, maybe help recommend funding sources to help make sure that it happens, or we recommend to that it gets changed.
I'd like to see how current those, you know, where those committees and where those capital outlay plans sit today.
Yeah.
Because I think we need to know where we're beginning from before we can really begin to know what we want to ask for and and put in our plan.
Sure.
Yeah, right? Thank you.
Yeah.
Good point.
And then the, you know, the obvious elephant in the room is, which is going on right now, which I am more involved in as a private citizen than I ever thought I would be, is what's happening with DEP and the new regulations on septic systems, how that turns out. I mean, it's sort of have placed a lot of things back into motion that, especially in Harwich, we, you know, we have the approved wastewater plan, and I've been moving on and playing that, that depending on what happens with DEP, that's going to completely come back into play. And probably right in the middle of our planning process.
We're resilient.
Well, that'll definitely impact on some of our recommendations or thought processes.
Can you guys think of, and you might not even be able to answer this tonight, but where you, where you think the most effective public outreach has been and how it was done? I think that that would be a really useful resource for for us. You know, we've talked about all kinds of things, you know, surveys and, you know, stakeholder meetings and, you know, all the sort of usual...
Social media.
Yeah, yeah, all the things that you can do, but, but, but thinking about what's the most effective, what are the most effective tools to use and in what order? It would be, it would be helpful to have, have some feedback on that.
I'd definitely have to give it some thought, and I would just say, like, right off the bat, I would say a multi-fond approach, which it sounds like you're hinting at. And because I think the community so far that have had good public feedback have done all of those, social media, and it was all during COVID period too. But different people, different groups, demographic groups respond differently, and so, yeah, we'll have to think about, you know, Saturday morning meetings, that's, one group loves that, another group doesn't. Having food always helps.
I'll throw a rager, we'll throw a rager, we'll get something going, we'll get the people involved.
Don't worry. Yes, a little wine nut.
Yes, right, people open up.
Well, I think actually, the best, you know, sort of chuckle at that, it might have been wealthy years ago when they started their plan, I think there was a, say, a shellfish committee meeting or a group, a more casual meeting that, you know, wasn't at town hall, it was at a community place, and there might have been wine or food or something, but it brought the community out.
And oysters, yeah. Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Hell, yeah. Thank you, guys.
Other questions? Brian, do you have any questions?
Brian, ding ding.
I do. Yes, can you hear me?
We can beautifully.
No.
Yes, can, could you, is it Chloe or Martha, I don't know who was running the presentation, but you could put up the page that had the vision statement. And I recall you making a comment about the vision statement to say that many, that your recommendation was that we be as aligned as we possibly can. Want to make sure I heard you. And I'm curious as to what other towns have done relative to the vision, because I think that's where our grounding is, before you get to the goals and before you can actually drive out the details of the plan, it's got to be aligned to the vision.
She's getting there.
You had a nice statement there.
This one?
It was the actual, no, it was the actual statement, you have, there is.
Growth policy, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So I'm curious about your thoughts about how we construct a vision statement and how we drive to a prioritization of goals. Is that something that's done within the LCP itself? Is it something done in coordination with the Board of Selectmen? I mean, what's, what's the process by which other towns have driven their unique statements?
Once again, I think it varies a lot by town. This is the Regional Policy Plan's growth policy, but I know Brewster and Yarmouth, they had entire visioning processes that were, I think, you know, a year or two long, really honing in on visions for specific kind of issue areas as well as as overall. Other towns, I think, have approached it more as kind of a broader vision statement to begin with, and then looking at the kind of issue areas. After that, I don't know, Martha, what you would add there, I think it's...
I would just say there's been a huge, there's been a real range in communities about what their growth policy. I mean, I know some, some people on some committees have just sort of bristled at the word growth, I mean, growth policy, what that means.
And, and growth policy is different than vision statement, right?
Right, that's true.
Yes, I mean, and, and this is also varied in different communities, you know, your vision statement could be sort of an aspirational statement that might sort of capture what the town feels is is sort of the underlying character and sort of aspiration or goals for the future, but a growth policy might be a little bit more, I'm not sure what the word, I don't know if the word is practical, but it might be more sort of a strategy, like, this is, this is how we see our future, and this is how we want to be. That's what it sounds like saying.
Well, I think maybe a little bit more from my perspective, the growth policy might be more specific about like where certain changes might be happening. I mean, this is saying, for example, growth should be focused in centers of activity. I think other plans have identified, for example, like village centers or like commercial corridors, a little bit more so like that, whereas the vision is, yeah, to Martha's point, a little bit more overarching and aspirational.
Okay, now, I agree with that. Now, given the aspirational nature of the vision statement, do you have any thoughts about leading practices for developing it? Is it something that's done after the surveys and after the touching base with the constituents? Is it best to do that in a broad-based way and kind of lay that anchor into the process or somehow start with that? Just curious.
I mean, I think it should be definitely at the forefront of the process, understanding what the vision is for the community. I think you'll know your community best and how to go about that. Some communities do have been starting with a previous vision statement, I believe, and kind of using that and kind of saying, does this still work? Are there things we'd like to change? Or, again, going about it in kind of a more, I think, really building from the ground up with identifying kind of what are the key issue areas in town, what are those key issue, key priorities, and and kind of then how does that coalesce into vision, an overarching vision?
Okay. Thank you.
Mystery caller number two, do you have any questions? I know who mystery caller is, it might be Jim, could just be whoever.
Oh, Jim, yes, it's Jim next to me.
Oh, hey, Jim.
Please join, you guys will like, hi, folks.
Hi. Hi.
Any questions?
Not yet.
Okay. Other, this has been tremendously helpful, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We really, really appreciate your time so much, thank you.
So every Tuesday? I'm just going to ask now.
Tortured by eyes.
That's all? I got it, don't worry, I got you, show up, we got you. Yeah, we got you. Fall off a truck.
Any, any last minute questions or, I have, we will certainly, we're very, very grateful for your expertise and your time, thank you so much. So connect via email, and I have a few sort of follow-up things, like we'd love to get a copy, we have a way where we're kind of tracking material that we can go back and back on, so I can make sure for the slide deck, which would be super helpful, and then we can connect about, you know, existing sort of online mapping and, you know, any resources, we deeply respect for the commission, we can incorporate in this whole process.
And I'm thinking we need to get back to you on public out, on sort of what's going to happen.
We'd love to know that, yeah.
Share some things.
That would be great.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you.
I've got one question, if I could fill it in.
Please, Jim, go ahead.
One question, yeah. So, so like you mentioned, that some towns, you know, are meeting with groups in town in different ways, is there any sort of systematic look at whether, you know, if that's two people go, or five people go, or everybody go, or, you know, do you have any sense of what works best in terms of how you're doing outreach? what works best in terms of how you're doing outreach?
I don't think there's a numeric, like, best practice there. I think, yeah, again, it probably depends how many people you're expecting to meet with, format and who the stakeholders are.
No, and sometimes, I mean, I love to think about sort of the value of having a champion who's sort of pushed things along. So if there's committee members, I mean, you all or your friends on other committees in town who might have a particular interest and are close to, say, the conservation folks, you know, have them, maybe have them get together with people and start.
Champion is a nice word. Yeah, we were calling them subject matter experts, but champion is a nice word, yes, yes.
You're all champions right now, right? You're carrying the LCP forward and that's exactly what it needs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stayed dry out there. Should we do a two-minute stretch break before? Yeah, why don't we, I just will pause for a moment to refresh before we'll poll this here.
Let's see. Does anyone have the password for this building?
It just works on the guest.
Oh, it's on Kindle there very fast.
Pick the guest on, it seems to work.
Make the meetings lots of fun.
I had to go ask you about the open space plan.
Bernie, yeah, you have to join the big table in some way.
I don't have to, no.
Could you please, could you please?
I actually have to also go to that meeting, so it just kind of works.
Okay.
I'll bring you down, I'm sorry. No, I'm okay right here.
Yeah, so.
But thank you for doing that.
I understand the 204 was a jumping place for the deep Christmas.
Oh, the holiday market was, yeah. I think 750 people went through, yeah, it was really, really nice.
Oh, boy, handouts.
And I remit my apologies to Paul, but I'll walk out of this one.
Are these the answers that we've been looking for?
Questions to the test.
Whoops, can you buy? Yeah, I'm good. Welcome, Paul, we're so glad you're here.
Mr. Paul.
Mr. Paul. I would, no, I have no shame of, I would like to start off on the right foot. How is the appropriate way to pronounce your last name?
Halkeodas.
Halkeodas. Yeah, Halkeodas, got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, we're thrilled you're here.
Thanks, it's good to be here and it's nice to be all, we look forward to working with you all.
He is giving us answers.
I'm the attorney, but given the team that we have here, I have looked over some resumes and it's an impressive group. PhDs, MDs, professional planners with lots of experience, so I don't feel like I'm going to need to lead this group. We've got lots of, lots of experienced people here that know the kind of... I did meet with Chloe a couple of weeks ago and got acquainted and she mentioned that there was some discussion about, well, you know, how long is this going to take and what's involved? And so I offered to try to do a schedule and I ended up doing kind of like half a schedule to get us through the visioning part of the planning process. And that's what I just handed out to you. The back page is just the summary of kind of the steps and target timeframes to get things done, but what I wanted to do is just kind of walk through what I see we're going to need to do and I just threw in some dates and projected timelines of how long it would take to accomplish some of these steps.
Can I just, I assume our two remote people don't have the luxury of being able to see this.
We can share it with you, but it is a timeline that you would like.
Brian, you'd be into this.
I love it already. I love the description, I love it.
It's a timeline you're going to like, yes. Sorry.
So next time around, we'll be a little more coordinated, getting ready for the meeting and having the stuff available, they should really be able to share with you or email to you in advance. But just catch it up now, so the first step, and I understand that you've already started working on some of those things, but just to kind of reaffirm that, the first step is drafting requests for proposals to bring in a consulting firm that can do the majority of the writing of the plan. Trying to write these things ourselves will be a two or three or four-year process, but when we bring in consultants, they're able to pull things together and get us through the process, I think, a lot quicker. And with the experience of good consultants, we should have some good results from them. I did started to go through our digital files and I did find a draft RFP that looked like Charlene and the Wayne that started working on. And so that was last, worked on in September and it looked like it was started last March when Charlene was here. But I have a draft and it's substantial, 31 pages, so there is a starting point there.
I think that would have been John, it'd been...
Yeah, so Charlene and Wayne.
Yeah, it could be either one, but either way, that's...
Yeah, there's something.
Yay.
So who's going to write the RFP?
So that, I would volunteer to do that, that's kind of a staff thing.
And as you know, from our meeting, we have, you know, that was the substantive part of our, of kind of putting our values and thoughts of our deliberation last month, kind of in a...
What was important to include in the fact?
Yeah, 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 which I think you have access to.
So some of what goes into the request for proposals is standard, standard things that are required by the state and information that needs to go in and it needs to go in in a certain format. The town administrator, Joe Powers, is the chief procurement officer and he'll be the one that will have to give the final sign-off and review of the RFP before it's let out. I did take a look at some of the sample RFPs that were in our digital files and I kind of copied and pasted the table of contents, the outline, to give you a sense of kind of the sections that go into that. The first one at the top is Truro and is very brief, and then the next one I looked at was Watertown, which was much more detailed. And we'd probably be working off of, you know, more of the Watertown approach, which has, you know, a little more detail. I think that I could probably get a draft of the RFP done within a couple of weeks and the target date that I drew it was the 13th of January. How we approach this is up to the committee. If we want to have, if we want to try to push this along a little faster, the chair could ask a couple of members to focus on this with me and we would work together on it. Or if you want to have a draft and bring it back to the next meeting in February, have everyone review it and approve it together, there's kind of like, you know, a little bit more deliberate and slower and more inclusive, that everyone gets a chance to chime in. Or if you want to say, let's just get this done and, you know, we can run that up after working with a couple of members, we could send a final version to everyone for comments before we finalize it. But there's a couple of points here where I think there's an opportunity to try to break up into groups and to go off and work on things and then circle back as opposed to the whole group talking and deciding on everything. And I'm, you know, I'm looking at the professional planners, like, you know, one or two could be tasked to get some things done and move this along quicker. So that, I think we can get a draft done in a couple of weeks and then have something that we can submit to, to Joe Powers to take a look at and decide whether it's ready to go.
Could I ask, we're going to have thoughts about this and we'll have the discussion. In, you know, I think we all feel pretty good about putting, you know, in what we are one discrete set looking for from the consultant and, you know, there is, in terms of our values and in terms of the process. And there's a fairly standard list of consultants that are able to do this work. Short of the interviewing process, which we're going to find is pretty fit, is there much really variation there? Are these, are these sort of stand, you know, when you look at what is important to us as a committee, is that fairly standard or are we kind of headed down different paths? Not different paths, but are...
Let me follow with this. The first question I have is, Yarmouth decided to just hire the consultant for the visioning process and to deal with the rest of it once they got through that part. Others have said hire the consultant for the whole thing. It wasn't clear to me which of those two you were thinking of.
So for, I understand the town's got $200,000 appropriated to develop and update to the local conference of plan and that's enough funding to do the whole plan project.
So would you hire one firm at the outset and then just monitor it as it goes?
Yeah, I don't think it would make sense to change horses after you've already gone to a visioning process, that the consultants would be engaged with, then they'd know what's important and what needs to be focused on up there.
If you anticipate, like, who potentially is going to respond to this, is what we're asking for fairly standard?
Yeah, so in response to your question, the things, the qualities that the committee is looking for in a consulting firm, that'll be one section of the RFP, but a lot of it is going to be about process and standard forms and that kind of thing.
Yep.
And what we want in terms of a scope of work, what do we want other consultants to do and at the end of that, what are the final work products? And it's really important to clearly state what you want for final work products so that at the end of a process, you thought you were going to get something that, you know, no, we're not doing all those maps for you, the commission's going to do those things. So that's what's really important.
I understand, I get it, I get it, I get it. You answered the question.
So, help me think through this, but I see two different, totally, two different tacks on RFP outline. And I look at this Watertown RFP and it's just like, for $200,000 projects, that is just like insane as far as all the information out. If you want to tell me that this is what they're going to require from the town administrator, I'll shut up right now, but, you know, basically the Truro outline says it all. I mean, especially with you talking about the Cape Cod requirement, commission requirements and that type of thing, whereas, you know, we're getting to minutia here and that's kind of setting the stage, which I'm a little concerned as far as the responses we're going to get because all the consulting firms are super busy right now and they're going to choose what they're responding to. And if we start tying their hands, which is what this bottom one does, in my opinion, then I think we might have a problem there.
So the proposals are free?
No, we know that.
We're not paying anyone to develop a proposal, we're writing a request for proposal, telling them what we want them to put together for us in terms of updating the local conference of plan. So you will end up with something that's kind of a hybrid, a blend of that and it's, most of it is going to become boilerplate, standard, standard stuff.
Just, it's partially in response, Barbara, the whole middle section of the Watertown RFP, that's pretty much boilerplate stuff. So that shouldn't scare, that shouldn't scare anybody off.
It's indexed, and that's the lawyer's, I mean, aggressively indexed, there.
Yeah, I mean, what, the first thing Paul's handed out is really much more on target in terms of the things that are needed in the various steps. I would refer to that more than to the Watertown one.
And I guess what I've left with, what we have in the starting point is something that's everyone's biggest, so it's not going to be brief, but it needs to be thorough.
So it's a legal, it's a, yeah, it's a legal financial request.
I think that most of, most of the boilerplate parts of it, maybe I shouldn't speak for the whole committee, but my sense is, we don't really care about that.
Right.
What we do care about is the scope of services.
Right.
And the evaluation criteria.
Yep.
And we want to, we want to get the best consultant we can. I mean, we're all really invested, I mean, or best is a subjective word, right? But like, you know, that, I mean, we want to put the best, yes, the best fit and also the, we are ambitious for this committee.
I think I'd love for you to get them to respond to give us a sense of how they're going to handle outreach, how they're going to incorporate that into a package that we're developing, the visioning statement, what their schedule is looking like, you know, are they going to try and push us through outreach in a month and a half or are they being more realistic? You know?
That, I...
No, I was going to, you asked us, and maybe if it's appropriate, the time for deliberation, I don't want to cut you off, is the two different approaches of trying to, with this proposed timeline of, you know, getting the RFP posted before the next meeting or, and I'm opening it formally to discussion, versus drafting and then approving in the, at the next meeting or whatever? Any sentiment around that?
I understand that you all have just started working together and so it takes some time to build up some trust and so we're all, you know, it's going to take some time to get to know each other.
I want to open up to discussion, I have a thought, but I don't want to split it one way or the other.
I think you should say your thought.
I agree.
I, yes, I think we have just, you know, but we've been meeting every month since September. I, my sense, I would, that the sentiment of the committee has, we'd like to get this train moving, so posting the RFP as soon as possible would be my bias, but it's open to discussion, particularly if we could, you know, have a breakout group, get it done, build on what our last meeting's consensus was. I don't see a sense to delay that, I want to, committee is very wise and experienced.
Well, I'll back that up. It's very hard to get anything done with a committee of 11 people.
Agreed.
And if we have smaller subcommittees and, you know, with, so I think that should definitely be the way to go.
This doesn't seem to me like where our controversy is going to be.
I agree, 100%. And I'm willing to allow a committee of, a subcommittee of this committee to handle that.
Keep it three or less.
Yeah.
Other discussion, and tomorrow, online, friends, too.
Well, I always have to watch out for that, but yes, yes, even so.
Peter, Brian, any thoughts there?
Not right now for me, I'm trying to catch up reading these, these couple of pages.
Or Jim.
Just a comment.
I'm good.
Thanks, Brian.
Oh, he's good, okay. Joe Powers is a real busy guy and getting his okay is probably going to take longer than we think it is. So we might just want to build in some, some margin for that because, I mean, our experience so far has been that it's, he's just got so much on his plate that, you know, you put something like this on his desk and maybe he doesn't get to it for a while.
30 pages or something that he needs to read, yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, but if you do the whole 30 pages and you have the two-page summary and give him a suggestion as to what you think he ought to do, it may be a little quicker.
As I said, we have to, I understand it'll take some time for him to trust me and...
Yeah.
Propore, yeah, we understand that.
Can I ask one more?
Please.
On your outline, you're talking about the survey. Now, we've already had a little bit of discussion about one of the communities that did an open-ended survey and they got all the preliminary information they wanted, but it took them forever to sort it out and then a much more directed, where somebody had to decide what all the questions were fairly specifically. So they ended up doing a sur, a general survey and then a more specific survey. And that's gonna slow everything down.
As a means for community buy-in, though, we're, we're referencing Yarmouth, right? I mean, this is, they really, it was a very open-ended qualitative, it's very hard to code that and expensive. We would like to ask our consultant about that.
I don't wanna pay the consultant to do that.
And then very, and then a deep dive sort of, I mean, that is the intellectually valid way to do that. And then came up with, you know, a quantitatively driven survey.
I, I think, I think that the, the more effective way to seek that kind of comment is, is through focus groups or stakeholder meetings or whatever, rather than trying to do it, trying to interpret open-ended survey answers in a, in a way that's consistent. I, I just don't.
I agree with you about the targeted groups and doing it that way. But then where does the survey come in? It would be a more targeted survey following that.
You would imagine to be valid, I mean, we're, we're veering off to this, but, but to the discussion.
Yes, we are.
Uh, you know, yes.
Okay, I'll back off.
We're gonna hear about this from the, from when they come and interview, that's all. Sorry, these are great questions for them.
Surveys are important, especially how the question's ordered.
Yes, really. So, oh, Brian's raising his hand.
I, I, we've had to, I think this discussion before, and I think both are critically important. It's a matter of timing. Uh, I, I think the open-ended input, we're gonna want time and time again. As I love that comment someone made earlier, as we work as champions with different constituent groups, I think over time, we're gonna be in constant solicitation mode for the unstructured input. But I do think that the survey's gonna become vitally important at some point to give us some effect patterns. The survey's gonna give us data that I think is gonna help ground our goals.
Well, here's, here's a basic question. I mean, there, there are two ways that we could approach this in the RFP. One is to say to the consultant, give us your best proposal of what a public outreach, um, approach should be. The other way is for us to tell them what we want them to do. And, you know, um, they have, that, those approaches have pros and cons.
Yep.
I think maybe we potentially can do both in the sense that if you look back at our document, our sort of summary of our values, uh, there's a lot of, uh, discussion around, you know, both the subject, both the areas, the populations that we wanted included as well as some of the methodology. So in, maybe there's a way to ask and the RFP show us your best and kind of reflect back, oh, is, oh, cool, that's stuff we hadn't thought of and that's reflective of our values and our goals as a committee versus, oh, gosh, they're really totally missing it if they say they're gonna have, you know, four, seven o'clock meetings on, you know, Tuesday night. Okay, they may not be the ones for us.
I think that we're gonna need to, um, be clear on what our expectation is for community outreach. And if, if we were to say, you know, you propose the best way in, in your proposal for us to get community outreach and just leave it at that, but we have the expectation that, oh, we obviously wanna do a public opinion survey and if they didn't include that, you know, that's a $10,000 item maybe.
Got it, okay.
So we need to, while not, we need to outline for them what we want. We, we want a webpage, we want a social media presence, we want a public opinion survey.
Yep.
These are the things that are now pretty common in, in, through a public outreach. And then see what they can add to that or what kind of insights they can provide.
Right, I mean, at the end of the day, we wanna hear from as many people as possible that are maybe not traditionally captured in this kind of process.
I'm gonna continue through, um, the memo. So the, the first is to write the RFP and we talked about the timeline and work on that and, and we'll circle back and, and make a final decision on the approach. Uh, the second step is to advertise the request for proposals. And this is where there are some state requirements for this kind of thing where we ask, have to let the world know that we're looking to hire a consultant and give consulting firms all a fair shot at submitting a proposal if they would like to. And so there, there's the state central register where, um, when cities or towns or counties have let out a contract for, for, you know, almost anything, they have to post it there and, and there are companies that just scan through those and, and look for their next job. The COMBIs is another version of that that the state started about 10 years ago. Very similar, um, you know, we'll go there, we have to advertise, they say in a local paper, so it, it could be in, um, the Cape Cod Chronicle or the Cape Cod Times. Um, and, and those are the, the main places where we need to, um, let the world know that we're, we're seeking to hire consultants. There's also the Mass Planners List serve that has, you know, a few hundred planners and land use attorneys across the state that's used to exchange information and we would put an announcement there. Um, the, um, the Beacon, the, the Mass Municipal Association publication is another, another place where we would wanna, um, put the word out. And then, um, from our contacts, we, we know some consultants and we know some consulting firms. And it's not illegal to, to just directly say, hey, we've got a request for proposal here. There's a deadline, you wanna submit a proposal and, and try to cast as wide a vote as you can.
Paul, as somebody who's on the other side, we have a government services vertical and we have people that scan through this stuff. And if the dollar amount doesn't hit a certain threshold, we're not even touching it. And there are some really good firms that won't touch it unless they have a lead in. So can we just, is there a way where we could just, whether it's you or other contacts that have worked with these consultants before, just say, hey, who's done it well? Let's get the top five people in our local area that have done a, a kick, a kick butt job at it and, and tell them to apply to the RFP that way. Like, I just know, like, as somebody who works for a bigger IT services company, we would look at this and if it was just the visioning statement for 40 grand, we'd be like, see you later. If it's $200,000, see you later, right? So how do we get the best person for the job? And like, I just know, we make jokes about COMBs and everything else, like, no one's touching it unless they know, hey, you know, there's only four or five firms in the mix on this thing and we have an understanding of what the actual work is, right? Um, just 'cause it takes time and effort to answer and respond to an RFP, you're not gonna put resources on something that doesn't have the output for you. So how do we get the best firm, like, in your opinion, like, what's, what's the best approach?
So if we have an idea of who, who some of these firms are, I've got a list and half a dozen right here, um, we, we will talk to the other planners on the Cape to, to see how they felt about the, the work that these consultants have done for them, you know, what kind of a job did they do? And so, um, using, reaching out to our peers is one way. But unfortunately, there's not a huge list of companies that do this kind of work. It's not, it's not a big profit center for these companies. And oftentimes, doing a master plan is viewed by some of them as getting their foot in the door with the community. And we made recommendations to do, you know, a housing plan, but, um, you know, another town has to hire a firm to do a housing plan and we know them, so. So, um, I, I would be surprised if we got more than four or five proposals. And, um, recently, we, I, I know in, in a, in a community nearby where I was working, they issued an RFP and they only got two, two proposals.
Yep.
So we'll, like I said, cast a widest net. We can let the world know they were looking for a consulting firm.
Would you issue it through COMBs, et cetera, a formal RFP? And if you've got a list of about four or five, would you contact them directly?
Yeah, that's what I was saying, you know, we'll, we can contact people at these firms that we know directly. Some of these firms, you know, are already doing work for the town or have done work for the town. So it, it's not illegal to reach out to a consulting firm that you know and say, hey, you know, submit a proposal and we'll evaluate it along with all the other proposals.
Cool.
So we'll do the ad and, and we've gotta let the ad, uh, we need to advertise for a couple of weeks. So there's legal requirements of how long in the local paper and I think in like the central register, the ad, it, it needs to be posted for two consecutive weeks. And then, and then we would schedule a pre-bid meeting. So, so I guess let me go back to the mechanics. So all we're gonna do is say the town of Harwich is looking for, um, a consultant to update the master plan. For more information, go to this link. So the town will have, and I don't know if, if Harwich does this, but in other communities, um, in order to download the RFP, you have to tell us who you are. What, what, who's going out?
Give us your email address.
Yeah, give us your email address. And, and that can become very important later because if, um, if they have a question, we're supposed to give an answer to that question to all of the firms that are, have signed out the RFP. So if someone asks us a question, we can't just answer that company directly. We have to let all of the firms that have signed it out. So that's why we go through the sign-out process. So, um, I'll be working with Zara and IT to see, you know, how the town does this. But I know this is the way a lot of communities have been doing and it, it's important to do it that way and it works pretty good. So we would have a pre-bid meeting, I would recommend. And, um, we said after the, uh, after the companies have been given a chance, like a week or so, to review the whole RFP and they're starting to get it to the nuts and bolts of putting together a proposal, they're gonna have questions. And so at a pre-bid meeting here at Town Hall, we would set it up where companies can come in. We would do a brief presentation. Um, we probably wanna have members of the committee here.
I have a question, but what is the convention? Is that during daylight hours, we meet on the 11th?
That's usually a daytime thing.
Okay.
And so, um, the whole committee doesn't have to be there, but to have some members of the committee, I think, is important.
The convention is it's a, it's outside of this kind of meeting, got it?
Yeah, so, um, we just give a little bit of information, you know, so the last time we updated the plan in 2011, now we're, and, and kinda go through, um, a little bit of background and then see if there's questions. And then we were trying to answer those questions. And, um, anyone who signed out an RFP, even if they weren't at that meeting, would get a written response to a question that another firm might have asked.
And it's, and it's an open public meeting, members of the public, you know.
Right.
And, and, and we don't convene the meeting, it's convened by staff. Kind of an official meeting of this body.
Right, 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 I was just trying to.
We basically sit and shut up and just watch the meeting.
Or try to.
It's important to give these firms enough time to prepare a good proposal. And so usually about a month. And, and that could go a little bit longer if we'd like to give them longer. The time of year, obviously, we just get through the holidays, so we're, we're clear for a couple of months. But, um, set that deadline. After receiving the proposals, um, they, they all need to be reviewed. And like I said, I'm not anticipating a lot of them, so it shouldn't be too heavy a lift. But I've had RFPs where we, you know, we got 15 proposals and each one was that thick and it took a couple of weeks to go through all of them. How we approach the proposal review is another thing that we can talk about. What do you wanna try to streamline? I think that we're probably not gonna get a lot, so it would make sense to try to, um, maybe get everyone involved with the review. What's almost as important as, as reading the, the hard copy proposal is, is what happens at the interviews. And I would strongly recommend, um, interviewing the, the, the top, you know, two or three consultants that, um, have been selected through, uh, good proposals. And, and that's where you really can get, um, a better feeling for how they, how they do a presentation, how they answer questions that you throw at them. Um, and you can see if, you know, it's hard to describe if it clicks. If, if some people you click with and some people you don't. And, and it's usually at the end of the interviews, you're like, yeah, we like them better. And it might be hard to explain why, but you'll, you'll have a feeling that, that they're a better consulting firm than the others. So, um, we would do that, that could be done in an evening meeting like this. Um, and I think most of the consultants are used to doing, doing that. So we, we would set that up after we had narrowed down to the, some finalists. And then after the interviews, I think it's usually, okay, we can make this decision now. It's not, after you've read the proposals and done the interview, usually you can get to a decision point pretty quickly. Once we go through the, um, formalities of, of signing contracts and getting all of the forms required, insurance, that kind of stuff, um, the consultant's officially on board and we would schedule a project kickoff meeting. That, that would probably be at one of these regular LCPC meetings. And at that time, we would, um, do some basic communication, a project contact list. They'd wanna know, uh, have a list of things they want from us, existing data that the town has that they're gonna need to, to see and, and, you know, we'll exchange information.
Paul, going back to your number seven. Um, once the LCPC or once our group makes the recommendation, is the final approval town administrator or does it have to go to Board of Selectmen for this dollar value?
That's a tough one for me to answer because it's the third week on the job.
I think for this, yeah.
It's over 50 grand.
Yeah, that, that was, that's my assumption.
So, so we would, your committee would make a recommendation to the Chief Port Cerman Officer, Joe Powers, and then Joe would make a recommendation to the Selectmen.
Yep, just gotta build on top of that, that's it.
Okay, so yeah, again, it's gotta build in some time and it could be a trip to a Selectmen's meeting to talk about, you know, the company that we'd like to hire. Um, so my, my time schedule here is fairly aggressive. And, um, and all of this is subject to the real life things that make things take longer than we, we think they will.
We, we appreciate your ambitions, yes.
God forbid we have a lizard on the night that we have interviews scheduled.
That's why we have this now, we have to work all around that. And so I, I, number nine was just, I wanted to just get out there that, yeah, yeah, we definitely should do a public opinion survey and it really, it wasn't, didn't need to go into this memo, but I wanted to get that out there. So we, we need to do the survey and that's gonna take time. It's gonna take time to write the questions and to come to a consensus on the final wording. And, um, with a group like this, it.
And I'm, and I could even say we're like more ambitious than a survey. Like, you know, it, it, survey, sure, a word, but it's a whole, it's a thing.
That's where the other elements of, of the outreach get involved. I, I worked on the, the Leeds Local Conference of Plan maybe almost 30 years ago. Um, and I remember going to, we went to the, we didn't just say, well, have an agenda, welcome in. I, I met with a Namakoid sailing club.
Yes, yes, yes.
I met with the legal women voters, engaging church organizations, the Chamber of Commerce.
Which we have some of that organized, which will be useful for you.
And this doesn't mean that the whole committee has to go meet with something, but, but maybe we break, break up in groups of two or three. We have a standard, um, approach to how we do the outreach meetings. We start off by explaining what the conference of plan is and why we're doing it. And, and, and then we step back and, and we say, well, what's important to you? And we ask certain questions. But we, we kinda follow a, a similar script with all of them so that the data isn't completely scattered and indirect.
And, and to you, we've done, as we were getting ourselves organized and waiting for you, have done a lot of that organizational work internally, like who are the stakeholders in Harwich? And some of that is, and that's all in our, our group order.
But still, time, time sync, though, we involve those.
Yes, 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 yes. So we, we, I think we've got them identified and even assigned ourselves appropriately.
A, a, a workshop or a visioning charrette is, is something that I would recommend. And those are up and done on a Saturday morning. Um, and, um, uh, various techniques to try to engage people, to get them to open up and, and share what they think is, is important or what the town should be doing in, in the future. Um, and so that's where having a good consulting firm to kinda lead those processes are important. And the other methods of, of outreach, the, the website and, and, you know, a Facebook page and things like that will all help to, um, inform what will come together as, as a vision statement.
One thing I just noticed, uh, target time for the charrette?
Yeah.
First or second week of May. First week of May is town meeting. However, the fact that we want to get the charrette going is something you're gonna, you're gonna hit a lot of people at town meeting if that's mentioned.
Yes.
So that would be, but it probably can't be the first week of May, no matter how good, how fast you.
And there's a lot of things that go on before town meeting, so that's a busy time of year with various committee meetings and hearings and things like that.
I mean, that could be actually a good time if it is brought up.
It's a good time to let.
When everyone, a lot of people on mass are all focused on meeting.
Yeah, yeah, the rest of the population. At that point, we will hopefully have some data. We'll have, uh, survey results, we'll have, um, comments from the website and social media, um, the visioning session, uh, and, and then we kinda sit back and let the consultants put it together to synthesize all of those comments and information and feedback that we were able to get over the course of four or five or six months. or five or six months. They will come up with a draft, and we will review it. And one of the most important things is to make sure that there's not any stupid mistakes, like they called the pond the wrong name or the wrong street name. Because people, if you show them a map and there's a mistake on it, they'll, ah, the whole map's wrong because I just found one. So that's where the local knowledge comes in, where, you know, I'm not going to be able to tell you whether a street's spelled wrong, but you all will be able to. So that's like the low hanging fruit, but that's the easy stuff. But it's important that we make sure that, that it's correct. And then, then we get to the meat of, oh, what, you know, what is all this input telling us, whether the resident's trying to tell us is important for the future? We'll review a draft, I'm sure it's going to get marked up with lots of red pen, and there'll be lots of comments, the consultants will then have to revise that, and this may take two or three rounds. In my experience, it could take more than that. I remember in one plan I was reviewing the consultant's work, I said I, you know, broke the end of a red pen because I marked it up so much. So we'll have to review that. Once we have a draft vision statement that everyone's comfortable with, then it's the next kind of public workshop where we tell people, here's what we've come up with, and what do you think? And that might be a good time to have a joint meeting with the planning board and the Board of Selectmen at a regular meeting, at a joint meeting, to try to get everyone's comments all together. Then if it needs further revision, changes need to be made, they do that, the consultants do that for a final draft. I only took the schedule at this far, because that, you know, this will take us most of the year.
Anything else is speculative.
And I didn't want to kind of get further, but from what Joyce had shared with me, the visions from Brewster and Yarmouth, it looked like their approach was pretty front end loaded with the vision being really important. At the end of the day, we got to keep in perspective that it's going to be, you know, it might be boiled down to just like a couple pages. Some communities just have, you know, one paragraph. But the ones that you shared with me were much more detailed and, you know, hit on certain topics. And so, we're going to need to decide how we want that to end up being, whether we want to have it more detailed or less. But that'll, that'll bring us to the fault. And at that point, we can then talk about the approaches to getting more community outreach on specific topics that the plan's going to focus on, like transportation, housing, climate change.
Cool.
Sounds good. Isn't it fun to have a planner?
Oh, my God. Very good. I'm missing you.
Been waiting for you. Missed you.
Nice start.
I've, um, no, I want to let you finish, but then... I worked on, I worked on conference plans in Orleans, in Waymouth, from beginning to end, managed a project in Marshfield, I worked on their, their master plan. So I do have some, I have some good experience doing this kind of work. It's, it's interesting work, but it does, it's a long haul, and it's a lot of listening and, you know, filtering between what's relevant and what's not.
Totally. And we're going to think we're special snowflakes at Cape Cod, too, and that may or may not be true. But, you know, we're thrilled to have, thank you, thrilled to have your expertise.
Brian had his hand up.
Here. Yes. Brian?
Yes, I know it's hard to follow this remotely, but when I heard the plan laid out over time, one thing that bothered me a little bit was, we seemed to skip over the town meeting as an event, that we should have some sense of presence. Even, even if we're listening, we don't have anything to present, I wonder if we need to be taking advantage of every opportunity to listen, so the town appreciates that they're part of the process. I didn't want to cross over that too, partly.
No, I guess the point, I'll take it.
Yeah, and the town meeting, it's, it's a, what it comes down to is it's a business meeting for the town to decide what kind of, you know, new laws or changes to existing laws, and what they want to fund in the budget. It's a great opportunity to let everyone know where we are in the process, and at some town meetings, they give chairs of committees the opportunity to just get up and give a brief report to town meeting, and that's probably something that we should think of doing.
Yes.
You can do that.
That's what I'm looking for.
Yes.
And I, just being respectful of the time, because I think we have a little bit of deliberation, we just have to briefly decide approach of the RFP. I think, have you completed your, you said everything you wanted to say. It's lovely. It's lovely. Go ahead. And then I want to make sure Pete has a chance to speak as well.
Okay. I guess the, the, the decisions that we need to make, do we want to...
Yes.
Agree to a small committee?
Yes.
I'm fine with that. And I think, you know, just as long as after we got a final thing, it can be sent out for everybody to review.
I think we have to have a form, we'll have a formal motion about that, but just if, before we move to that, Bernadette's running away. Any questions about this?
No, no.
Okay.
I didn't realize I was the only one, I'm sorry.
Garrett had a home emergency, text me, Peter!
And I have to leave quickly.
Oh. Okay. Peter, any questions?
No, I'm comfortable, thank you.
Before you run, yes. So, so do we have a motion to have a subcommittee to write the RFP and come back for review before our next meeting?
I know that we have a subcommittee of three people to work with the town planner to write the RFP, that before it goes to the next step, that a copy of the final product gets circulated so any of us can see something that we really...
We're trying to adopt this timeline.
... can scream.
Second.
I don't, any discussion?
Open, the only discussion is, I'm hoping you feel this is the right path, to form the small committee, to work with you. Just want to make sure I understand it all right. To work with you, to create the RFP model, so that the rest of us can get, see it before it goes live. Is that what we're motioned and seconded?
Yes, and let me respond, I'll be writing the RFP, or I'll be, you know, editing what's already been started, so not a lot of creating, but just finishing, after it's been written, I need reviewers.
Yeah, no, and we're eager to do that. We're eager to do that work.
I think this is the most efficient way to get the next step accomplished.
So we have, we have a motion, and we have a second, and we'll have a vote in favor of the motion of course.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So it's unanimous for those who are left. And do we have any volunteers who want to be on that subcommittee?
I will.
Good and good.
Excellent.
I'd volunteer, too.
Lovely. So we have, we have Ed, Margot, and David.
I move to accept the three.
I second it.
Aye.
We have to have a formal vote.
Discussion.
Discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then, so the timeline, so we adopted that, the timeline would then, on a VCC email to the committee, we would anticipate that we're going to see this draft around the 13th. So that's just a look, would be, that is a week from Friday. That would give us the time to deliberate or kind of revise, and then potentially post on Thursday, the 19th. That's our...
So.
Do you have all of our contact information, so you know how to...
He does, and I think through the open meeting law, it has to just go through the VCC, I know. I think you can, you can communicate with us directly as a committee VCC.
Yeah, and so on that point, on the open meeting law, I'll be able to send, once we've got a draft that, that we're all in agreement with, that can go out to the whole committee. But what we have to avoid is having the whole committee discussing it online.
Correct.
But if you have, if somebody has a comment, sees something that needs to be changed through me, they can let me know, and then verbally I can discuss it with the other members.
Yeah, everything goes through you on that.
Yeah. So anything that comes from me, we can deal with, but just not with you folks each other. I know Brian and Peter will be working remotely, so we'll be able to communicate that way, and just as long as we know not to have the whole group communicating with each other.
Yes, understood.
So on, on that sort of general topic, in every other committee in this town that I've been a part of before I got elected, this coalition got elected, I was given a committee roster, and with names and phone numbers, so we would know how, one, I don't have, I can't, like me, I can't remember everybody's name here, because I don't have a list of you.
You can send you a, me roster, and I actually, I'm pretty, I think the, and I think the contact information can be shared, but the gist of the law is that we're having deliberative conversation.
Oh, yeah.
That can't be done online.
Bless you for asking, thank you. Now, to send out emails to everybody individually is like, are you kidding me?
Yeah, but, you know, at times, you know, as I learn that somebody has a specific interest or expertise in a topic, I may want to get in contact with them and just sort of pick their brain, you know, like you did with me when I first joined the committee. But I have, without having, I mean, there's no such thing really as a phone book anymore, so I don't know how to get in touch with anybody, or most people.
I think, I, I don't think I'm speaking out there, that we can share that amongst the committee, a committee list.
Yeah, so you would send me a committee list, I'm going to add my contact information on it, and then send it out to the whole committee.
Lovely.
Good, very good.
So Sheila Delaney's the planning assistant, you might see something from Sheila.
Sheila. Don't say Sheila, Sheila.
Sheila. Okay. I have to run.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Can I just point out quickly, if we seem to ignore Jim Nickman, it's because Brian and Peter are both showing up with their names and pictures, and Jim is just caller one, so I don't want him to feel ignored.
Just to finish up, we do have, we have a little bit of time, and I appreciate being respectful of everyone's time, but just to finish up, so, we have our subcommittee, we are anticipate that we're going to post this RFP the 19th. There will be some follow points, and I'm sort of saying this out loud, so that, you know, the RFP is obviously incredibly important, but there is some work on this committee as a whole that goes on. So we will be, I will be specifically reaching out to the commission for her to share, Chloe to share the slide deck, to make our request, obviously, and CC and Paul, for some existing data. And that, that offer, we want to really keep up on it, if they're able to do some mapping for us, I thought that was a good offer. Yeah, we want to grab anything we can data wise from that, seemed very smart, so we'll follow with that. And then, as a kind of a record of the documents of this committee, is the Google Drive appropriate? Because like, this stuff can start, the Google Drive, we can keep putting that there.
Okay.
I'm asking.
Yeah, so you've already set one up?
Yes.
Yes, which I shared with you.
Yep.
Okay, yes, yeah, of course, which I will, happy to reshare, I know you got a lot of information coming at you. But this is, we are putting a fairly robust set of resources together, just by plugging away here the committee's expertise, so, and I'm just confirming that that is an appropriate format.
I think so.
Because, you know, like, the slide deck from the commission's going to go there, the other RFPs, the other visioning processes are there. We've even, there are relevant lay media articles that are very relevant to the discussion here and the work of this committee that I have emailed out, that we want to have a record of this.
So that's, that's the stuff that we'll draw onto a, we'll set up a town, a page on the town's website.
Yeah, for internal history making, right now that's happening on this Google Drive.
Okay.
I was just going to say, another thing you could talk to Chloe about is census data, because the commission has served as the census repository for versatile county, so to see how, how they're crunching the numbers.
They look like they had some pretty already crunched stuff that I wanted them to share with us, like, hey, only fourteen percent, you know, comparing Chad, Orange, Brewster, like, very comparative data. They're like, oh, easy for you to share with us. It's very meaningful.
Surprisingly, we're younger than the surrounding communities. You saw that, too?
But less, less...
But not Harwich Port, not Harwich Port, just the overall town.
Less protected open space, so, I mean, you know, just comparing the apples and oranges.
Depends on where you're looking at it.
None of us lived there.
We've made our way through the agenda quite effectively with fifteen minutes left. Anything else that we have not covered?
Great meeting.
Very good.
Good job, Madam Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome. We're looking forward to working with you.
Yeah, and to be the fund committee.
You're required, you're required to stay for a long time.
I move to adjourn.
The second, formal vote.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.